The caveat, letting them know where it is in the process so that they don't confuse it with a final action.
And then is it more often than not that we find that the discipline that was warranted in another state will be warranted in California? Or is there ever a moment or opportunity where it's not?
In the majority of cases, the vast majority of cases, it's warranted. And that's even more true now that we have shifted in California to a version of the ABA model rules. So that the rules in California now are much more closely aligned with the rules in other jurisdictions. So it's even more likely that we would find that that discipline would be warranted here.
So it's a, it's a timing issue.
It's a timing issue.
Thank you.
And Mr. Chair, if I could just respond one real quick as to the ad hoc commission. So we met within the last month as the full commission and staff presented the auditor recommendations, as well as steps that were being taken to the ad hoc commission, just to keep them in the loop. These, the recommendations were not presented for the ad hoc commission to adopt or to take any position on. But really a informational item on the reality that the state bar is facing right now as far as the auditors report. And you know, very clear direction that we're, we're taking in response to that. So the ad hoc commission has been advised of this.
Thank you, Brandon. Sean?
Thanks, Reuben. And George, thanks for this. So I have a couple of questions. So first, you mentioned a deadline. What is the deadline, George?
So this is one of their recommendations that they want us to have in place by July?
By July, okay. So here's my question. So the, I'm looking now at attachment A, which lists the three situations in which these consumer alerts would be posted. And the question is whether these should be called consumer alerts, at least for items two and three. And the reason I ask that is unless things have changed, my understanding is that generally speaking, discipline on the website, an attorney has a record of discipline. It's just listed, says disciplinary record or disciplinary actions, whatever it says. And it's just, it's listed and there's maybe a link to, I forget how it works now, there's a link to the state bar court file or whatever. The consumer alert notice has been reserved for certain situations that are of more serious, especially serious concern, right? And so one of those is comparable to item one on attachment A, which is some kind of an interim suspension of the attorney that, and that's typically done only for, you know, very serious misconduct that presents a, you know, clear and present danger to the public. So it's not your typical disciplinary ruling. But items two and three seem to encompass any type of disciplinary decision in another jurisdiction. And so that doesn't seem to harmonize with the more general policy about how we list all incidents of discipline versus a sub, a small subset of those that we've determined that consumer alert is warranted.
So I mean, that would be an alternative if you would, I mean, if the board would prefer, we could simply in instances two and three, simply list the fact that there's been discipline imposed in another jurisdiction. The reason that I thought this was appropriate was that this would then include the caveat that follows along the lines of our, our other consumer alerts. In other words, treating it as, you know, essentially akin to the other things for which we do consumer alerts, recognizing that discipline in another jurisdiction. In other words, what we do, you're correct, when we have discipline, we do post that on our state, on our, on our page. It simply lists the discipline, has a link to which they can go to it, but it doesn't have a caveat because that disciplinary action will have been taken. And so here, I thought it was more appropriate to treat it like a consumer alert, to let them know that there had been this discipline taken in another jurisdiction that wasn't disciplined in California, but that might lead to discipline in California. And obviously, once the discipline in California takes place, the consumer alert would come down and the list would just show the discipline here in California.
And what, so when we list a pending disciplinary case in California, is there some kind of disclaimer saying the innocent until proven guilty?
Only for, as you've noted, I believe the interim ones, but for, if there's actually a disciplinary, it simply has the, the, the discipline and then a link to typically the state bar court order or the state bar court webpage where they can pull up the order showing what the discipline was.
No, no, I mean for a pending, so a case where an NBC.
For a pending one, we just, I believe we just list the NBC, but I think we, I would have to look.
Yeah. So because the idea of the disclaimer for a pending case where there is no finding of misconduct with the lawyer, I think is a good one. But I think, I don't think the way to do, I think the way to do that is simply to have the disclaimer and not turn it into a consumer alert because it's just not consistent with the board's existing policy. If you want, George.
I think that would satisfy the state auditor. In other words, if we simply listed, you know, discipline in other jurisdiction or non-final discipline in other jurisdiction, and then a caveat, as long as we had a, the problem is I'm not, it, it becomes more difficult to create a link to that stuff. If we, I mean, I guess we could post whatever record we have of it and just have a link to that.
Yeah. So here's what I would suggest, especially because it's getting late in the day on our agenda. The last time the board looked at this whole topic, in other words, how we display discipline and pending disciplinary cases on the website and when consumer alert should be imposed. We had a memo that sort of had, you know, examples of exactly how various situations would look on the website. And what I would propose to do, if it's acceptable to the rest of the board, is work with you and anyone. If another person wants to volunteer, I can work with you because I remember all, I think I remember most of the details around this and kind of hash it through and come back with a proposal that in July that implements this recommendation of the auditor in a way that's consistent with how we post California disciplinary decisions and maybe add a disclaimer to all pending cases, right? Because that's your, that's your, was your motivation for two and three. I think it's a meritorious one and that the disclaimer should be applied to a pending case in California also, I think. So I think it's worth drilling into this in a little more detail.
I, I'm, I'm fine with that.
I would just ask Sean and George that you all include Kelsey Lyles, who you've seen working on the strategic plan. But one of the things that she's also done is wrangled all of the different board items on consumer alerts because there's been many over the years and we had not kept them in one single place. She's consolidated it, created a table. So I just want to make sure that that work is.
That would be great. I looked for that when I was doing this and couldn't find it.
Yeah. Wonderful. Yeah, I'd love to see that. So that's just, boy, that's just tailor made for this project of George and me to work on.
Can I double check something? And that is the deadline in the audit. Was it, was it before July or by the end of July? I mean, we're not going to meet until the third, third week of July. So this technically won't go into effect until that time at least.
Give me one second. I can pull that up.
Thank you.
I mean, Mr. Chair, would we just be able to give a direction that whatever steps taken would be consistent with previous action taken by this body? And it would essentially just come down to reviewing what we, what actually taken in the past and then applying that to, you know, the current issue?
I, I don't personally think it's, I, I think it's fine if the board takes action and it's July meeting.
I think it is. I think it was just July 2022.
Okay. Yeah, I think that's, I think that's correct. Is there any, any discussion about Sean's suggestion? And it sounds like he's looking for at least another volunteer to work with George and he, and him rather on this. Any volunteers?
Oh, Mr. Chair, I'll, I'll volunteer.
Okay. I don't believe we need, I'm sorry, Sean, go ahead.
All right. I just said excellent. Thank you, Brandon.
I don't believe we need a motion to that, for that. I think Brandon and Sean and, and George can take our collective direction and, and come back in July.
That's fine.
Great. Wonderful. Thank you. Takes us to item seven zero six.
I'm sorry, we, we have a, we have a motion for seven oh five. I mean, a resolution.
What?
So.
You're not acting on it.
Can we just roll it?
Yeah, we just won't act on that and we'll just continue that to our next, to our July meeting. Do we need a motion to continue, Mr. Retana?
No, I don't think so. No, no one's going to make, no one's going to make a motion.
I think the board can just not act on it and then bring a new agenda item with a new resolution in July.
Great. That's what I thought. Okay. Thank you.
We can all, we can all abstain and then it'll roll over to the next one.
I want to hold on that, dang it. Okay. Item seven oh six is the approval of revised guiding principles for the state bar legislative program and recommended positions on legislation and budget items. Ms. First, Kim and Ms. Grammy, welcome. Good to see you.
Good afternoon. I'm going to handle this one. Ms. Grammy has the, another item on the agenda. My item is brief, but it's in three discrete sections. And so I just wanted to, in light of the hour, sort of present, mention what those three sections are. And if you'd like me to skip any of them, I can certainly do that. The three discrete sections of my presentation are about the adoption of the revised legislative program, purpose and guiding principles. The second, the second discrete section about support for specific items going through the budget process. And the third, an update on the loan repayment assistance program, which we discussed at the March meeting. If you'd like, I can start going through each of them in order, or I could skip any of them if you'd like.
If the board doesn't have any objection, I, I'd prefer Donna just to go through them in order.
Okay, will do. So at the, at your last board meeting in March, the board adopted an initial set of legislative priorities for the 2022 legislative session. And also at that time, directed staff to bring back at this meeting an update to the state bar legislative program, purpose and guiding principles document. That document was initially developed and adopted in 2018. The principles are intended to guide staff and the board in their recommendations and decisions about what affirmative legislate, legislative proposals the bar should pursue and what types of legislation it's appropriate for the state bar to take positions on. The revised language to the, that guiding principles document is included as an attachment to this agenda item. The, the amendments from the 2018 version largely reflect changes as a result of the 2022 to 2027 strategic plan, which Ms. Lyles talked to you about a little earlier this afternoon. In addition to updating it to reflect the new strategic plan, as part of our recent efforts to make a more robust legislative program, the state bar staff have been identifying, engaging with legislation that impacts the state bar as a state agency that impacts us as an employer, a commercial landlord, a procure of goods, things like that. As a result, the guiding principles specify that the executive director, in consultation with board leadership, would be authorized to establish legislative priorities, establish priorities and positions on things that are more focused on the administration and operation of the state bar as a state agency, while reserving for the board the responsibility for developing priorities and positions that relate to the state bar's role vis a vis attorney, admission, regulation and discipline, promoting the ethical practice of law and support for access to the legal system and diversity, equity and inclusion in the legal profession. So I'll pause here. That is the end of the, the first discrete section. See if there are any questions before moving on.
Any questions for Donna? Thank you for the red line. It's very helpful.
And so absolutely. So the next part of the agenda item recommends that the state bar affirmatively support spending, support pending budget proposals and that seek to increase funding for legislative, for legal services. There are proposals currently being discussed in the state budget process that include increased funding for the equal access fund, which is administered by the state bar's legal services trust fund commission. There are also proposals, and that's sort of a, 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 an increase generally for the equal access fund. And there are also proposals that are being discussed for increases in the, in equal access funding that's specifically dedicated to homelessness prevention, as well as legal services related to consumer debt. These proposals are directly tied to the strategic plan goal of protecting the public by enhancing access to and inclusion in the legal system and providing improved access for legal advice and legal services. And so this agenda item recommends that the board direct staff to, to affirmatively indicate the state bar's support as these proposals move through the, through the budget process. Any questions on that before I proceed to the final section, which is the update on the loan repayment assistance program?
I don't see any.
Okay, seeing none. So at the March meeting, the board adopted as one of its legislative priorities that, that the state bar pursue a loan repayment assistance program. State bar staff in partnership with the Access to Justice Commission, as well as the Legal Aid Association of California, have been advocating for a $10 million appropriation for a loan repayment assistance program for attorneys working in IOTA funded legal services organizations, as well as those in legal services organizations that receive funding from the Department of Social Services for providing certain immigration related services. Under the current proposal that we have been discussing with, with the budget committees, attorneys would be eligible for up to $10,000 annually as, as a loan to, for them to pay their student loans, their student loan obligations capped at the total amount of their, of their actual annual loan obligations. If they continue to work in a qualifying legal services agency for 12 months, then that loan to them, that $10,000 loan to them would be forgiven. Negotiations are continuing as to whether the program, if approved, if budgeted, would be administered by the California Student Aid Commission or the state bar. Under either circumstance, the state bar would pledge $5 million from the proceeds of the sale of the San Francisco building for administrative overhead expenses, as was addressed at the March board meeting. This is an attempt to ensure that as much funding can be made available to the presenter, to the applicants, to the borrowers and, and not devoted to administrative overhead. And that's the, the end of the, the third part of my presentation. We've got two resolutions that are attached to the agenda item, but I'm happy to take questions on, on anything.
Donna, I've got a question. So the five million from the bar is, does that make the total for the program 15 million? Or is it five and, five from us and five from the legislature?
So the idea, the idea would be that the, that we are proposing the legislature provide a $10 million appropriation and that the $5 million would go toward multiple years of administrative overhead expenses. At some point, depending on how long the program continues, and the $5 million would be depleted and the legislature would be providing that additional support. The, the, how much of that five, how quickly that five million will dissipate depends on the amount of infrastructure that would need to be put in place in order to operate the program.
Okay, thank you. Sonia, you have a question or a comment?
Yes, thank you so much. And thank you, because this is something that's dear, close to my heart. Would this allow us also to get grants to add to the pot, to, to the fund? To be able to redo a loan repayment or scholarships?
And so if I understand your question, what we, what we're asking for is a, is an appropriation from, as part of the budget process. If, if, if we, I mean, I'm assuming if we were to say, we've got additional money, please take that. I'm assuming that that would be, that would be something that would be welcome and always something that we could figure out how to, how to accomplish.
I understand about the, the legislature as well as our, from the sale of the building. But again, taking from me, my experience with the Health Professionals Education Foundation, we also got grants from corporations or other foundations. Would, would, do we have that ability also to do the same thing? So that we can ensure that we have continuity and will be able to provide, you know, assistance to attorneys.
So I, so we can certainly look into that. I think that is an idea that the legislature would be interested in providing sustainability. So that at, that at some point, the legislature would not be obligated to be funding it in the budget if we were able to find additional outside resources to fund it. So that, that might be an important addition to direct that the agency that's administering the program identify some outside resources to ensure ongoing sustainability.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mr. Chair, just on that point, it might be worthwhile to talk to CLA and their foundation about any sort of partnership opportunities. And if they're making any headway in either writing for grants in this, in the space or if they're interested in any sort of partnership, either with the legislature or the bar. So I think that's a great idea, Sonia.
We can have the resolutions up on the screen. We'll figure out whether we need to make any changes based on that last point. I mean, any, any questions or comments on the resolution as presented? The second resolve seems broad enough to me to capture what Sonia and Brandon just suggested without an amendment, but certainly I'm, you know, if someone wants to propose an amendment, we're, we're here to do that. Seeing none? Is there a motion on this resolution?
This is Brandon. I'll move the resolution.
I heard Sonia first, Jose, sorry. Madam Secretary, we have the roll.
Rotten?
Yes.
Chen?
Yes.
Cisneros?
Hi.
Dela Cruz?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yes.
Selig?
Yes.
Shelby?
Aye.
So?
Aye.
Stallings?
Yes.
Tony?
Aye.
Ten ayes, zero nays, the motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Looking at our remaining agenda items, it strikes me that seven oh eight and seven oh nine might be taken together. Mr. Retana is presenting on each of them. I'm going to assume, but tell me if I'm wrong, that they are similarly situated with similar issues. And then we'll see how we're doing on time for the rest of the items, Mr. Selig.
Um, Mr. Chair, may I ask, and I think I need to leave very soon for, to take care of other obligations. Are you intending just to do the remainder of the open agenda or go into closed?
I was intending to do the remainder of the open agenda, but taking seven oh eight and seven oh nine first right now. Okay. In the interest of expediency, quite frankly.
Okay. So, yeah, so I'm going to leave. I will listen in while I'm driving home, but I won't be able to participate. So, thank you.
Okay.
Reuben, it's really just three, three more items because we're doing seven ten tomorrow and seven oh seven will be very short. So after we do seven oh eight and seven oh nine, if you're amenable, I would suggest we take care of seven oh seven and wrap it up. It's short.
Okay. Is Bridgette Grammy with us?
She is. But we could do seven oh eight and seven oh nine first, if you want to do that.
I already teed it up. That would be great if Robert could. I'm just, I'm, I'm just worried about how much longer I'm going to last.
Sure, I'm happy to do it. I'll try to be quick about it. So starting with seven oh eight, I, I, I believe the board's familiar with, with this issue, having approved waivers in recent meetings. But just to be clear, the exception is to the CalPERS 180 day waiting period for retired and new and to begin work for the state bar. The first item seven oh eight relates to Lori Malak, who we discussed earlier today. And since she was an executive, it requires a resolution also that waives the 180 day wait period and also waives our policy manual 12 month wait period for executives to do any sort of business with the state bar. So there's two separate resolutions in this one. As, as you heard, Lori Malak has a vast experience with the client security fund, as well as other programs. And so we're in transition now that she's retiring and we require her expertise and knowledge to assist with the work of that program and some of the initiatives that she has started. So if the board is so inclined to do so, we'd ask that the court, the court, the, the board approve the resolution. Her, she would come back to us at the rate of a supervising attorney, as stated in the agenda item. And the, the rate of pay is also stated in the agenda item for Lori. And her assistance would be greatly valued by the state bar. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions on this item? Nope.
This is Brandon. I'll move it.
Second.
I think it was Stallings and then Rotten, is that correct? Thank you. May I have the roll, please?
Rotten?
Yes.
Chen? Trustee Chen had to, had to leave. Cisneros?
Hi.
Dela Cruz?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yes.
Selig? Trustee Selig left. Shelby?
Aye.
So?
Aye.
Stallings?
Yes.
Tony?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays, two absent, the motion carries.
So seven oh nine is, is the same issue. This one, however, doesn't involve an executive, so there's no need to waive the 12 month waiting period under the board, board policy, but we do need to waive the 180 day waiting period under CalPERS. Mr. Who is a longtime state bar court employee, as described in the agenda item. He has specialized skills and the state bar needs interim, short-term assistance from Mr. Who during the 180 wait, day wait period. He would be compensated at the rate of a court specialist in the amount stated in the agenda item.
Thank you, Mr. Retana. Any questions? Motion's on the screen. May I have a motion?
This is Brandon. So moved.
Second.
Stallings with Cisneros. Then we have the roll call, please.
Rotten?
Yes.
Chen? Cisneros?
Hi.
Dela Cruz?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yes.
Selig? Shelby?
Aye.
So?
Aye.
Stallings?
Yes.
Tony?
Aye.
Great. Thank you. That takes us back to seven oh seven. Thank you for your patience, Ms. Grammy. This is proposed amendments to rule point, rule seven point four zero, assignment of judicial nominees evaluation commissioners to request a circulate for public comment.
Thank you, and I will be as brief as possible. So as you mentioned, this is a request for board approval to circulate amendments to rule seven point four zero related to assignments for the Jenny Commission. This rule sets forth requirements for the composition of the teams of commissioners that are assigned to evaluate judicial candidates that are provided by the governor every 90 days. Specifically, the rule requires that at least three commissioners be assigned to evaluate appellate court candidates, one of whom must be a public member. And in recent conversations we've had with the governor's office, it's come to our attention that there are a significant number of vacancies on appellate courts, particularly right now, and with more expected in the coming year due to retirements. Currently, there are only four members of the Jenny Commission are public members out of the 38. And so that really limits the, this requirement that a public member serve on each three-person team really limits the number of appellate court candidates that the Jenny Commission is able to process in each cycle. And so in consultation with the governor's office, we're proposing this amendment that would just add the term, to the extent practical, practicable, to the requirement for the public member, just so that it's reiterating the importance of having public members on these teams. But it does give a little bit of flexibility in unique circumstances, like we're experiencing now, for the commission to be able to process and have the capacity to process more appellate court candidates during the cycle. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Mr. Tony, you have a question?
Uh, yeah, I, I'm sorry about my video. It's not working now. I don't know why. But anyway. The issue that I have is that I, I, I don't like this idea of basically saying that these judges can be evaluated without a public member being part of this. Judges are too important to not have public participation. If they need more public members on a Jenny Commission, that, then we should look at how to make that happen. But to basically say it's okay, to the extent possible, is another way of saying you don't need them anymore. That's what it means. And so I, I, I am against sending this out to public comment because the implication of sending out something out to public comment is that you plan to take action on it. And I completely oppose this proposal.
You know, I, I do just want to address that briefly in that the, the public members would still, of course, vote on the ultimate recommendation that would go to the governor. They would still make all the considerations. It's just with the specific teams, there's teams that are assigned to call, you know, call raiders and do some of the workup of the, of the reports that are presented to the commission for a vote. So there would still be public member participation there. And the other thing I just wanted to add is that, that part of the problem is that most of the applicants, the vast majority of the applicants that we get to, to be on the Jenny Commission are attorneys. And I think it's because they hear about it from former commissioners that are attorneys. So we as staff and as an organization of the bar are certainly dedicated to trying to recruit and encourage more public members to apply for the commission. But given the circumstance that we have right now, we want to be able to, we think it's really important to be able to evaluate as many appellate candidates as we can, given the vacancies. And so this is something that we, we would like to be able to do right now.
Thank you, Mr. Cisneros.
Thank you, Ruben. I've been a member of our Jenny for a couple of years now. And I will say to support Bridget's last statement that there's not a significant difference between being on the kind of smaller team that does the initial evaluation. Whether there's, whether there's a public member on that or not, that's really just the evidence and and case gathering team that puts everything together. But every decision on our Jenny and, and on Jenny as well goes before the entire body, which to Bridget, your accurate point, does include, always includes public members who are making decisions. Every discussion I've had on our Jenny, and I'm, I'm confident this is true for Jenny as well, is full, fully, you know, fully engaged. Everybody's making good points. Everyone's debating with back and forth with each other. So Bridget, I think to your point, my experience backs up what you're saying, is that every member is having a voice in every decision and therefore every case is being considered always including by everyone, including public members.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Ms. Shelby.
I guess my question is, you know, we're in the process of looking at appointments. And so if this was an issue, I, I would imagine that there was some sort of conversation as it related to the recruiting process of making this a priority. So can you talk about what has transpired over the last couple of months and what there was a bottleneck in the process? I'm just trying to understand what sort of efforts have been put in place to increase public membership.
We have certainly done that. As, as a state bar in general, we've been trying to recruit more. And then on the Jenny Commission themselves, they have been more intentional about trying to recruit more public members to apply, which we have seen an increase in the numbers of applicants. I haven't seen the final recommendations. We're in the process right now of preparing the final recommendations to give to you, trustee Shelby, as the, as the appointment liaison for the incoming class. But the way that the, the Jenny Commission works is the, the, the year kind of starts in, in the June meeting. And so the next round of commissioners, when we fill in the vacancies, will start next April, basically, will be their first, like, shadow meeting. And, and so we're in the process of filling, you know, people cycle off every three years. So we'll be adding more people coming in the upcoming cycle. I think at the July meeting would, would be when the bar will be, the board will be considering a new membership. But it's just a long process. And the reason that we're proposing this now is just to allow us to have the flexibility to process more appellate candidates until we, we do have a new class coming in where we can hopefully increase the numbers. But we're, we're trying to also address kind of the more emergency situation going on.
No, and I certainly appreciate that and really enjoyed evaluating applicants for our Jenny last year. And so at the end of last year, one of the recommendations that I made was how do we improve our process? And so this, i- i- it feels like this is something we could have been addressing sooner rather than later. I was not, I, I, I recognize that it's the three years. I recognize that it's the timeframe. But it seems like it's an issue that just did not resonate. It seems like it's been an issue that has been in front of us because I know there were some issues last year in terms of our Jenny leadership and some renovations that transpired. And so one of the, one of the themes for me today that has come out of the part of the meeting that I've had an opportunity to participate in is gauging in advance. I know this was not an agendized item, but during the public comment, I was struck by the conversation that transpired. And so I'm feeling like a theme is engaging in advance in terms of being solution oriented before something is sitting right in front of us. And I certainly want to work to figure out how to address pipelines as they come sooner rather than later. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. So well.
I, I clearly understand the, sort of the dilemma or the conundrum that we sort of find ourselves in here. You know, the need to, to get these appointments through the process. You know, and also sort of the, the lack of sort of public members. And I want to sort of belabor this very long, but I, I just, whose responsibility is it in terms of just populating the Jenny Commission?
Well, the Board of Trustees appoints the, the members. I will, I do want to point out, this commission is a little bit unique. So our rules actually require eighty, at least eighty percent of the memberships of the Jenny Commission to be attorneys. It really is more of a niche, I guess, commission in that they're evaluating judges and what happens in the courts. And so there's a, a feeling, I think, or at least I, I think that's the rationale behind the existing rules, that it is important to have people who are practicing in the courts and who have familiarity with what's going on in the court to be evaluating the judges. That, so just that being the case, I did want to point out that there are some, the, the rules do require you know, a, a very strong majority to be attorneys right now.
And, and I also want to add that we have talked to the appointment secretary and his office about changing that. And there was no receptivity to doing that. So there has been a lot of discussion about this issue, and it is certainly new to my attention that they'd like to push through up to, I, I want to say through two or three times as many candidates this year. That was new information, but we certainly have been talking about the issue of public members and changing the composition of the commission. And obviously, we're serving the governor's office in this capacity. And so we do feel we need to be responsive and respectful to their views on the composition issues.
Understood. My, I think my final sort of comment will be just this, as a, as a public member to this body. Over time, I think I've grown to, to sort of really appreciate the need for the diversity of opinions, lawyers versus non-lawyers. The, the sort of diversity of sort of perspectives as it, as it in terms of, as we're evaluating issues, as we're analyzing issues, those, those sorts of things like that. And would just say that I, I'd like to try to figure out how we engage in this process more where we can then truly sort of understanding as Mr. Cisneros and Ms. Grammy have indicated, that public members are a part of the final sort of evaluative process. But even getting to that, you know, who, who might get pushed through. There may be some differences of opinions if there were more public members that were a part of that initial process. So I, I, I guess my, my comment is one of, I'd like to try to see us be helpful and do more in this particular arena. And I'll just sort of leave it at that.
Thank you, Ronnie. Mark, Tony?
I understand the, the, and what really purity and transparency that this is something the governors are on.
I'm, I'm sorry, Mark, your audio seems to be malfunction.
Very transparent. Can you not hear me?
Yeah, Mark, I, I could only make out maybe twenty percent of what you said.
Okay. Let me go off and come.
Okay, it looks like he dropped. Just a point of clarification, I guess, while we're waiting for Mark to come back on. The, the item before us is to approve for circulation for public comment, the proposed rule, which in, which as I'm hearing it sounds like it, it doesn't preclude public participation. It only allows sort of a relief valve in those situations for the appellate consideration of that three person panel, not to necessarily always have to include a public member if there's not a public member available. So it looks like Mark has come back on. Mark, as, as you were gone, I, I wanted to just clarify the request before the board right now is, is to put something out for public comment. And Bridget, will you? I saw you nodding, so I, I'm assuming I got it right. Will you?
Yes. Okay. So we're not taking out the requirement that a public member be a member of the three person investigating team. We're just adding the terms to the extent practicable, which is pretty consistent with many of the other rules have that type of language in it right now in the Jenny rules. But at least it would just give the flexibility while still, you know, maintaining the recommendation, I guess, that, that public members be included on these teams.
And I would, I would just say for myself through the chair, there, there's no confusion around the, the, the circulation of the public comment piece. I just personally, as the appointment liaison, this is the first time in this meeting that this issue has been raised. And I know certainly from the advocacy and the discussions that transpired last year around the importance of attracting more public members, it would have been really wonderful to have known this, this, this bottleneck exists. And so I was pointing to, to the point that I, you know. And I think the question of who's responsible hadn't been answered. And if it was answered, I missed it completely and I apologize. I know eighty percent of Jenny is attorneys, but I think trustee Sewell, Sewell asked who's responsible. And I didn't hear an answer to that. So if you could respond to that, that would be helpful for me.
Sure. I mean, as far as who's responsible for appointing, it's the board.
No, who's responsible for recruiting public members?
Oh, got it.
That was what I thought the question was.
Oh, okay, sure. Well, we do, well, Jenny's staff does help in that. And the, and the Jenny Commission, Jenny Commissioners themselves have been taking on that role to reach out to people that they know. But we've also been coordinating with Luisa and the bars, or as an organization has been working on this issue across the entities. So we have just been taking part in that recruitment effort as well. So we're, we're just starting that process now, though, you know, or we have been in the most, the past few months.
Well, I don't know, maybe Luisa, you can share how many applications we've received for Jenny and the number of public members. We have quite a robust pool, I believe.
Give me one moment. I will pull that information. It's a pretty large number of applications. I know that.
The overall responsibility rests with the appointments office. That's housed in the office of the executive director. There's a team working on that, Teresa Ruano and, and her com staff, Luisa, or Petian. And they're responsible. In addition, as Bridget mentioned, the Jenny Commissioners have played a very active role.
Uh, Mark, you're back with us on video and hopefully audio.
Yes, I hope so. Thank you for your patience with me. I'm really sorry. The, the system got bad. I had to find a network, what do you call it, to plug in. But look, here's what I wanted to say. I appreciate the fact that we have transparency, that the governor's office is asking the state bar to do this. That's great to know. Okay, it's a great piece of information to know. It is not by itself a, a reason to do something. However, the, the, the criteria is when we're asked to do something, does it, is it good governance? Does it apply to the principles? And we've got competing principles here. One principle of expediency, we need to get more appellate judges on the bench. I, I hear that. I understand that. Okay? I just, I, I just want to say we also have a competing principle, and that is public participation in the process. What is being proposed is a diminishment of public participation. And that is what I am objecting to. And putting this out for comment implies that we are planning to do it, and it's a question of how. And I, I would like there to be further discussion on, on this board. Then we can bring this back in July and see what are the other options for increasing public participation on Jenny, okay? Because that's the other, there, there's more than one way to reach the goal. And I understand that the outcome is to get more appellate judges through the process, through the investigation process, through the evaluation process. I get that. But what I, what I don't get is why this is the only option being presented before us. I would like there to be more than one option, more than one scenario.
Uh, Jose.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I appreciate that, what trustee Tony, you're saying. And I completely understand that. I just do want to be maybe a little repetitive and be absolutely clear. My understanding of the process and my experience of the process, Jenny and our Jenny is that this change does not in any significant way reduce the participation or involvement or engagement or, or or opportunity to be heard and weigh in the members of the public who are part of Jenny. It simply allows more evidence gathering to happen, whether it, it, because it may or may not be, may be able to be happening with or without a public member being part of the evidence gathering small team. But the public members are always the same as they've always been, fully fledged, engaged and voting and, and, and equally powerful members of the Jenny, full Jenny decision as they've always been. A, e, before or after this change, that's been the case with our Jenny. And I will absolutely say that whether I've been part of a evidence gathering team on our Jenny, or just someone listening to that team's evidence and making a decision has made no difference in the outcome as far, as far as my engagement as a, as a non-attorney member. I still weigh in equally, and I believe that my, I am just as engaged and had just as much impact. So I don't see, I, I, I understand the need to, to, and the desire to want to have more options out there. But I would like to be understanding of the consideration the governor's office is requesting that says it's in the public service to have more attorney, judges out there to do good work, to serve the public, to settle cases and hear cases and, and all that. And I want to be responsive to that. And this seems like a way we could do that, that does not in any way diminish public member input into the process.
I, I would like to add to that we, we are putting together a package and we are looking at efficiencies in the Jenny Commission in general and, and how they're operating, how other, what other rules might need to be amended to increase efficiency so that we can process more people in addition to this. We've pulled this one out now because, as we've talked about, the governor's office has requested it because they really want to be able to send us more people and we need to be able to process that as we are looking at other efficiencies. So this is certainly not the only one. And, and we really do, as a staff, appreciate and, and value public members. We really do. And so we, we hear you on all of this. We are being intentional about it. We're in the process of putting up, you know, there will be thirteen vacancies coming up for next year. And we're in the process of putting those recommendations together. So we'll take this conversation into consideration. But I just, I did want to let you all know, we are thinking about other ways to be efficient and process as many candidates, including superior court candidates as possible in each cycle to move through these vacancies. But this is just one we've isolated out for now at the governor's office's request.
Thank you, Ms. Grammy. Brandon?
Yeah, I was just gonna.
I was just going to say, not to belabor the point, but my experience with staff has been that. They have been absolutely responsive in trying to get public members to apply for some of these commissions. And the work of the Jenny Commission is enormous. There is an incredible amount of work that goes into fact-finding, presenting the reports and then. Just, just everything that goes with being a member on that commission. So I think staff has done a lot to improve our outreach to not just public members, but a diverse. Especially geographically diverse. Set of, of, of public members. And so. I, I'm fine passing this on to the public comment period. If it helps with Mr. Tony's concerns, we've used language in the past where. We add to the agenda item that. You know, that this release for public comment is in no way an endorsement by the State Bar of this particular agenda item. So I think if that meets Mr. Tony's concern, then, you know, I would, I would propose that. If we, if we get to a vote. And so I guess with that said, I would move this item. And if we get to a second, then, uh, you know, just take a, take it in, in a, that's walk step manner.
So we've got a motion on the floor. Madam Secretary, if you could, if you could put the resolution up so that Brandon can. Make sure that he's, he's moving something that he agrees with and then. Figure out whether his, he wants to make the motion with the additional language. Arnie, I see your hand. Let me just get the motion up very quickly first.
I second the item, or second the motion.
Okay, so the motion as presented on the screen, is that correct, Brandon?
Yeah, and, and I can change. So I, I'll, I'll make the motion, but then I would add language at the end. Stating that. Releasing this for public comment is not an endorsement. By the Board of Trustees.
Mark Broughton, do you want to second that motion as amended?
I don't think it needs that, so I'll withdraw my second.
So the motion on the floor does not have a second. Is there anybody who wants to second this motion as amended? Seeing that the motion dies, Arnie, do you want to make a motion on your own or provide some, some more debate?
More debate, actually, or questions. Two things very quickly. One is, and I know the hour is late. One is, is there a, a possibility that between now and our July board meeting? That there would be more folks that would be of, that would be public members that could be appointed to the Jenny Commission?
So. No, is the short answer. Maybe one person. But the way that the cycle works is like we would be recommending. There, that people have three-year terms and they kind of rotate through like three, like, we'll have like thirteen vacancies each year. So we'll be recommending thirteen new members in July for the following year. And so like the people that are right now, this four public members and thirty-four attorney members. Composition has just started in June for this year of 2022, 2023. If that answers your question.
Yes, my second question is a no vote to put this out for public comment. Is there some? Ramification during that public comment period by voting, I guess, I'm just trying to understand a vote no here. Is that in furtherance of some sort of delays or hindrance? To the Jenny Commission actually doing the work that it would be doing, doing that forty-day, forty-five-day comment period?
You mean if we didn't release it for public comment? Would it be? Yeah, well, yes. I mean, if we weren't, we're going to have to continue with all, you know, only assigning. You know, probably only taking two to three appellate candidates per cycle, just based on the number of public members that we have. Right now. So we would have to just continue with that same process. We wouldn't be able to, to increase the numbers significantly. With the existing rule. So if we didn't, if we didn't amend the rule, we wouldn't be able to.
If I'm misunderstanding you, the, but in July, we'll have a whole new set of folks that would be. That will have, will have more public members in July, is that?
For the next year. So they won't start until June of 2023.
Got you.
The news, yes.
Got you.
Sorry, I might not have been.
Bridget, under the existing parameters, could all thirteen of those be public members, those appointees?
I need to do the math. So the way, I mean, again, we could propose a rule change on that too. But there is a rule, there is a rule that says eighty percent of the composition of Jenny, which would, is up to thirty-eight members. Should be attorney members. So I don't, I'm not very good at math off the top of my head. I'm not sure what that would equate to. We could change the rule on that. And, you know.
But one, one final question for me is, is there any way, even though, as you mentioned, we're, we're going to be adding more members in July. Could some of those members, if they were public members, be appointed to fulfill the current term?
Well, we, we don't, we don't have any vacancy. We, we actually have had one resignation just happen. So we might be able to add one public member right now. But the, we're at the capacity of thirty-eight Commissioners, or, you know, thirty-seven at this moment. So we could really only add one possibly right now.
Got it.
Any other questions? Comments? Is there a motion for the resolution as presented?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
That was Stallings, Cisneros. Madam Secretary, if you could really, if you could remove that last sentence. Thank you. Seeing no further discussion, we have a vote?
I, I'm sorry, Cisneros seconded?
Cisneros seconded, yes.
Okay, thank you. Broughton?
Yes.
Ken? Cisneros?
Hi.
Bella Cruz?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yes.
Lloyd? Shelby? No. So?
I'm a no.
Stallings?
Yes.
Tony?
Nay.
Five ayes. Three nos. Two absent. I believe that carries. We have. Yes, it carries.
Jordi, have those voting? Great.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, it is after six P M. I am going to assume that we're not going in a closed session this evening. Just to bring everybody up to speed on where we are, we still have. Item seven oh one. And seven ten. To discuss tomorrow, in addition to our full closed session, we are scheduled to convene at eleven A M. And Leah, will you help me out? Do we have something, do we have to? Do we have open session business that must be started at eleven, such that we would just get through the rest of open session? And go into closed session to finish out our day?
Yes. It must be started, I, I, because Justice Petra is presenting and her schedule is fairly limited tomorrow. So I, I told her that we would take this up first thing.
Okay, all right. With that being said, we are adjourned until tomorrow morning at eleven. Have a nice evening, everyone. Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
It says nine on this.
The, no, no. So there's been a change to the posted agenda.